I would like City Council to call to order. At this time, I'd like to invite all of you to please rise and join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is approval of the regular agenda as presented. Is there anyone in the audience or any member of the council that wishes to make any changes to the regular agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion for approval. Second motion has been made seconded to approve the regular agenda discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The consent agenda is before the council and all items with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered separately in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience or any member of the council that wishes to make any additions or remove any items from the consent agenda?
Six C.
Do you want to remove six C? Any other items? I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda with the removal of item six C.
No moves.
Second.
Motion has been made seconded for the consent agenda discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The minutes of the regular city council meeting held on December 12th, 2023, and the annual city council meeting held January 2nd, 2024 are before the council. Is there anyone in the audience or any member of the council that wishes to make any changes, additions, or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for their approval.
No moves.
Second.
Motion has been made seconded to approve the regular city council meeting minutes from December 12th, 2023, and the annual city council meeting held January 2nd, 2024. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Without objection, I would like to adjourn the regular meeting and call to order a public hearing, and I'm going to jump down to the public hearing for Willow Springs. So with that, I would call on City Engineer John Pratt. John?
Evening, Mayor and Council. Maybe before I jump into this, I'll tell the audience, is there anybody here from Willow Springs? Steve. Okay. Yes, Alderman Carlson. So we have a presentation here on the Willow Springs and Deerwood Park proposed street improvements. Again, like all of our hearings, for these types of projects, we're required under state statute to have a hearing. The idea is to get project feedback, explain what we're planning on doing, answer questions, things of that nature. So I'll go over the background, what we're planning to do, what the costs, the assessments are, and the proposed schedule, and we'll have an opportunity for questions afterwards. So a little bit of background on the project, most of this is refresher for the council. You know, we annexed this area in December of 2019. We generally look at what sorts of improvements are necessary or potentially needed for areas that we've annexed into the city. Project's been on the city CIP for a number of years now. We've had a number of public input meetings to sort of discuss the scope and potential improvements, including street and possibly utility improvements. At one time, the sewer and water improvements, most notably in May 21, we had a specific meeting for that. And in April 23, there was a petition that was submitted by the property owners specifically for street improvements only. And so the council acted on that and moved ahead with the project design at that time, again, for only street improvements. And we bid that project in the summer of 2023 with a larger street rehab project, kind of in similar nature, with the hopes of attracting good numbers. We ultimately ended up rejecting that bid package due to high costs and lack of bidders. We only received one bid. So a little more background, existing conditions, there is no municipal sewer and water out in this area. Properties all have well-inseptics. We could extend sewer and water from Highway 59, the systems that are set up for that. We've talked about that at length. Existing streets roughly 24 foot wide, rural section road, no curb and gutter, most of it's aggregate surface. There's about a third of it on the western end as we come into Willow Springs. It has a tumulus surface, it's in pretty poor condition. This whole area's sort of been built out from the 70s to the early 2000s in stages as properties were developed. There's no stormwater treatment or storm sewer collection within Willow Springs. There's basically some limited culverts, but more or less water's sent collects in some shallow areas and swales and ends to the wetlands or infiltrates the soil. It's pretty sandy, so really dangerous to significant concern out here. There is a more defined system in Deerwood Park, there's sort of a rural stormwater collection system, ditches and culverts, and a couple of stormwater treatment basins there, since that is where those pieces were put in place in the early 2000s. What we're proposing to do, based on all of the previous discussions, the petition from the property owners, et cetera, is effectively go build a new 24-foot wide rural section with a tumulus surface. That'll be done by a combination of different things. On the western end, where we have the existing pavement, we'll actually do what's called full-depth reclamation, grind and blend that existing aggregate, the tumulus surface, to make a new base surface, shape and compact that, and then ultimately construct a new pavement surface over that along with the other areas. Who's going to know that Park and Sunshine are going to require just a little bit more significant grade, and there's really little aggregate on those, and we need to construct some cul-de-sacs. We will get those to fit in there, they'll be a little bit smaller than typical, just because of some constraints with wetlands. We are not planning to do any stormwater collection or treatment improvements. Like I said, there's really no notable concerns out there. This sort of improvement doesn't trigger any requirements either from the city stormwater ordinance or the public watershed or the state, so we're not, our hands aren't forced into that. And again, there's really not any specific issues out there right now. The city also is planning to install street lighting, be consistent with other subdivisions, spaced out kind of in that 300 to 400-foot spacing, so nothing very intense. It's kind of a one-per-block sort of situation. So project costs, we are projecting the project cost at $791,000. I'll note here that this is exactly the same cost that we presented the last time we had a hearing. Oddly enough, when we bid this project this last summer, this portion of the project came in within a few thousand dollars of what our estimate was. So I didn't find a real big need to change that number. That might actually indicate that our estimates are a little on the high side, given the rest of the project came in very high. But looking at about an $800,000 project to be funded by both special assessments and city funds, we would assess this in accordance with the policies that are set forth in the city's special assessment policy. In this case, 100% of the street improvement costs are considered assessable, as they're considered to be an immediate improvement. So 100% of the street improvement costs would be assessed to the adjacent property owners and the city who paid for the street lighting. We allocate those costs in accordance with the special assessment policy. In this case, it's effectively we take that assessable cost, divide it out by the available front footage of the area adjacent to the project, to come up with a cost per foot. And when we do that, we come up with an assessment rate of $76 per front foot, so a 100-foot lot would be looking at a $7,600 assessment. There are some larger lots out here, particularly back in Deerwood Park, that get up in the net 200 to 250-foot range, so those assessments would be quite a bit higher, about $15,000 or $19,000. So assessments would be levied against the benefiting properties starting in 2025. They'd run the property taxes in 2025. Property owners have an option to prepay all or a portion of those assessments, either eliminate or reduce the interest charges, just like any other loan. Project schedule, we did the report back in May of '23. We've had hearings now in May of '23, January of '24. I should have noted earlier, the reason we're having this hearing tonight, again, is simply because state law requires us to have another one if we don't award a construction contract. I think it's within one year, so that clock overlaps, and so we had to have another hearing. So the design's already complete, we haven't changed anything. We plan to bid this project again with a larger street rehabilitation project, which we'll be talking about later in the meeting. I'm probably getting that up to bid late February, early March right now, is the way it looks. Assuming we would have a special assessment hearing on this project after we open bids, but probably before we open or award the construction contract. If we did that, we'd probably do that in March, otherwise we would hold that after the construction project this fall, after the project's fully complete. And then construction will be sometime over the summer of '24. At this point, I don't have anything more specific as to when it would be done. Any questions?
Is there anyone in the audience that has any questions about John's presentation or comments, if you wish? Okay, hearing none, that public hearing was closed. Ron?
Yes, to give consideration to resolution to authorize plans and specs for the Willow Springs project, committee recommends an ISO move.
Second.
Motion has been made seconded to adopt a resolution ordering the preparation of plans and specs for the Willow Springs project. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Kelsey, do you want to explain that there's an additional piece to this that we can't deal with this evening?
Yeah, Mayor and Councils, to clarify on that, so the resolution that was in the packet was authorize of plans and specs and ordering the improvement. We can't order the improvement without a fourth, fifth vote, so that piece of the resolution will have to be carried over to next month's meeting. We've done the public hearing, we'll complete the public hearing portion of that requirement, but you'll have another resolution next month. Hopefully, we'll have eight voting council members so we can order the improvement.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, John. I'm going to jump to something else here before we go back to the rehab project. Without objection, I'd like to go to Finance Committee, item 7A, regarding would be charged country club. Okay, item 7B. Is that what I was, did I say A or B? You said A, but either way, we'll go to 7B. I guess, did you want my presentation this evening, or come on up there?
Hi, my name's Tom Dolby, I'm the General Editor, Head Prolet Detroit Country Club. Just finished our first year out there. We had a great year at the club, great community support. We got a really great year financially, somewhere around the net five, right now about $500,000 for the year, almost $4,000 on the last year. So we've done a pretty good job of trying to assess our capital needs for the future. Someone neglected in the tasks out there, machinery's pretty rundown, the structural buildings are in great shape for the most part, except our maintenance building, which we'll address here down the road. But we feel we have capital needs of somewhere between 300 to 400,000 for the next four or five years, and after that will decrease down once we get up to par with the newer machinery and stuff like that. So we propose our rates and fees for this upcoming year. Last year, we had a little bit more of an increase in most of the higher revenue generating categories, a 3% to 5% increase. This year, most of those higher generating categories had virtually no increase or none. There's some of the lower-end categories have about a 2% increase. So very minimal increase in fees and dues out there. Though I think Gulf's in a good place, and we're in a good place out there right now fiscally and staffing-wise. So I would entertain any questions or thoughts?
Any questions for Tom?
I just want to say thank you, and you guys did a good job all the way through.
All right. Anything else? So, thank you, Tom. The actual item for consideration is...
Yep, so item 7B is consideration to approving the 2024 budget and rates for the Detroit Country Club. Finance Committee reviewed this this afternoon and recommends approval, an ISO move.
Second.
Motion has been made seconded to approve the 2024 budget rates for the Detroit Country Club. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming tonight. So at this time, I'll adjourn the regular meeting again and call to order a public hearing to receive public comments on the proposed street improvements for the 2024 street rehab rehabilitation project. Again, I'd call on our City Engineer, John Pratt.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, just very similar to the hearing that we just went through, this would be the public hearing for the proposed 2024 street rehabilitation project. Again, just to gauge the audience, is there anybody here that's here for this item?
For you folks that just came in, are you here for the street rehab project hearing?
Willow Springs.
Willow Springs?
Yes.
We just actually had that hearing, and now we're onto a different one.
If they want to hang tight after this, I consider it as...
Why don't after this hearing, I'll have the City Engineer visit with you to see if you have questions or concerns, okay? Thank you. All right.
Well, I'll again be maybe a little bit more brief here, because we've done this hearing before, it's just a larger project than it was last time, and a lot of this here. But I'll just review what we're planning to do, then go over some of the costs related to the project. But just a reminder that a portion of this project, we bid a portion of this project in the summer of 2023, same thing as the Willow Springs, was part of that bid. We rejected it due to the cost of the lack of bidders, one bid. The council authorized a revised preliminary engineering report in the fall, and we looked at adding to the project's scope. The original report for this project had kind of parsed the improvements out into two phases. We bid that first phase and ultimately took some of the second phase now into the project that's being proposed, increasing the scope of the project. So that was presented and adopted at the December council meeting, and we're working on updating the design here through the winter months with the target of a summer construction project. So the project location, I'll go through this sort of on your stance, what we're planning to do is Roosevelt Avenue from Frazer Street to Eighth Street, so that's the underpass area. Randolph Road all the way from Roosevelt to Chris Street, which is near Swanson, it's a bear intersection around Highway 10 there. 15th Avenue in its entirety from 11th to Eighth. Eighth Street from 15th, roughly Highland Drive or just short of Highland Drive. 11th Avenue from Eighth to 34, so in its entirety as well. Garnett Boulevard and West River Road, which is a mostly residential area, some like commercial, just south of Highway 34. Also, a short little segment, potentially a thorough road, we had a little stock repair, the entire length of White Clover Beach, and North Shore Drive from Roosevelt to Highway 10, and Detroit Lakes Boulevard, which is a very small, narrow pothole road that comes off of North Shore Drive. So the existing conditions in all of these cases, we're looking for streets that we can rehabilitate the pavement that don't have underlying utility concerns. I mean, that's sort of the central to what this project's aimed at. So we're looking for utilities that generally are PVC, or we believe have significant life remaining in them, so we don't make a street improvement over the top of deficient utilities. Pavement, various conditions of poor, some of it is very, very poor. If you've been down like 11th Street, for example, by the middle school, or 15th, other areas, not quite as bad, but in all cases, deficient pavement, cracking, potholes, heaves, things like that, beyond what Sean and his crews can deal with in terms of patching and crack filling and seal coating. So generally, the curb and gutter is in pretty good shape in most of these cases. We may have some panels here and there that we need to replace, but by and large, all of that stays in place. So this is just squarely focused on improving the pavement's surface. The improvements that we're proposing is a combination of two different pavement restoration techniques, milling overlay, which most people aren't familiar with. We remove a portion, usually about an inch or inch and a half of the existing pavement surface, which leaves a portion of that pavement surface in place, and we simply put a new surface over the top of it. With that, we'll get some reflective cracking that comes through, we expect that. Sean works pretty diligently the years following these overlays to get those cracks sealed up, which extends the life of that overlay significantly. And the other improvement that we're going to use on areas that are more deteriorated is a little bit more aggressive, it's called a full-depth reclamation, and that's where we're going to actually grind the existing pavement up, along with the subgrade below that pavement, blend all that together, reshape it, trim it, compact it, and construct an entirely new pavement section over the top of that. That has just a little bit longer lifecycle than the sample overlay, generally speaking. So with those two in mind, this is the list of what we plan to do, where. We're going to do a milling overlay on Detroit Lakes Boulevard, portions of North Shore Drive, Roosevelt Avenue, Garnett, West River Road. Balance is going to be full-depth reclamation, which is going to include White Clover Beach, portions of North Shore Drive, so I point out on North Shore, we've got kind of a mixed bag on that one. Randolph Road will be full-depth reclamation along with 11th, Eighth, and 15th. This is a map of the areas, pretty tough to see, I understand that, with the pink being the full-depth reclamation areas, the green being the milling overlay areas. Pointing out on White Clover Beach, there's a little bit of a nuance with that one, we're not doing any utility work, generally speaking, on this project. The exception is White Clover Beach, there's a number of adjacent properties that are developable properties, they're planted, but they don't have sewer and water services extended to them from the mains that are in the streets. So now would be the time to extend those services to those properties, rather than taking back into the road undoubtedly a year after we get done improving it. So we'll extend those sewer and water services to the edge of the right-of-way in those cases. Project costs, I'm going to read through line by line, we're looking at about a $3.7 million project. Keep in mind that we will also be adding the Willow Springs project to this, but it is a separate project, so all in all, we're looking at a pretty sizable construction project that we're bidding. Financing, again, basically a combination of general city funds and special assessments. For the city's special assessment policy relative to these improvements, full-depth reclamation's are assessed on a 50/50 share basis, so 50% assessed. Milling overlay, 75% of the project cost is assessed to the adjacent property owners. Water sewer services, 100% is assessed. So this is a table that shakes out exactly how the overall $3.7 million gets allocated. You can see the assessable shares just shy of $1.4 million, leaving the city with about $2.3 million. That's, I would have no, fairly significant in this case, the heavy city share portion. A lot of that is because the city has a lot of city-owned properties where there's unassessable footage that we don't have anybody to assess. I mean, Randolph Road's a good example, half of that road, about the railroad, well, there's nobody to assess there, and so by default, the city ends up assuming that cost. So that's why it's leaned pretty heavily towards the city in this case. So for the rate calculation, we'll take that assessable cost in the previous table and effectively divide that by the number of the available assessable footage to come up with a rate per foot. Streets, rectangular lots, your assessable footage is effectively your interior width of your lot. If you're an interior lot, it's the width of your lot, about any improvement. If you're a corner lot, there is the possibility that we get hit on two sides. If we're making improvements on both sides, you're assessed for your front footage, which is the short side of your lot, plus up to half the width of the longer side, up to 150 feet than anything over 150 feet. But again, you're only assessed for that side, about any improvement. And if you have an irregular-shaped lot, we try to look at those and assign an average width to them. Water and sewer services are assessed per each, not per foot. So this table primarily highlights the assessment rate that we're predicting, or assessment cost, I should say, that we're predicting for the various locations. They're not all the same, because each of these roads, generally speaking, is a little bit different width or the structure that we need to put into it, and that's why there's a certain amount of variability in the assessment rate for each of these properties. So I'll leave that up there, let people digest it here a little bit. But White Clover Beach, we're looking at about $38 a foot, versus Detroit Lakes Boulevard, which is a very, very narrow roadway, just under $7 a foot. North Shore Drive, about $46 a foot. Roosevelt Avenue, $70 a foot. Eighth Street, $46 a foot. 11th, 15th, and Randolph are all similar, those are estimated about $54 a foot. Garnett and West River Road neighborhood, $26 a foot. Sewer and water services that I mentioned, White Clover Beach, those are more there, sewer service about $12,500, water service about $10,000. Any questions?
Is there anyone in the audience that has any questions or wants to make a comment regarding the 2024 street rehab project? I don't believe there's anyone in the audience, so I'll close that public hearing, Ron?
Okay, this is to give consideration for a resolution to authorize plans and specs for the 2024 street rehab project, committee recommends an ISO move.
Second.
Motion has been made seconded to adopt a resolution ordering the preparation of plans and specs for the 2024 street rehab project. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And with that, I'll reconvene the regular meeting. I don't think there's anyone else in the audience that has any items that need to be adjusted, but John, you're going to talk to those folks from Willow Springs. So we'll go to the Community Development Committee, and I believe, Sean, you're taking that agenda?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. All right, we have two items on here. I want to just remind everyone that we have new versions of them, either in paper or in email, because the versions that were included in the packet are not the correct updated versions. Item 5A, consideration to the second reading and adoption of ordinance 519 amending the zoning ordinance to revise Section 3 relative to defenses. The committee reviewed and recommends approval, an ISO move.
Second.
Motion has been made seconded to give second reading and adopt ordinance 519 amending the zoning ordinance to revise Section 3 relative to defenses. Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
Thank you. Item 5B, consideration to the second reading and adoption of ordinance 520 amending the zoning ordinance relative to the height of accessory structures in residential districts. And the difference with the version that we received in email and handed out is the version in your packet was missing the 12-foot sidewalk restriction we added last month. The committee reviewed and recommends approval, an ISO move.
Second.
Motion has been made seconded to give second reading and adopt ordinance 520 amending the zoning ordinance relative to the height of accessory structures in residential districts. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. That's all I've got for you this time. All right. The Public Works Committee Chairman Zima.
Okay, the item A is for discussion, we had Guy Fisher came in business a little bit in regards to Detroit, the MRA Trail Spur that comes up behind the Figgleson property in his regards. He had a little concern about the elevation of what that trail would be and also of what the cost would be, but that was strictly a discussion. And going on to item B, consideration to a special event application for the Detroit Lakes Fire Department for their street dance on August 9th of 2024. We've always have done street dances, but this year, we've got a little extra thing thrown in with it. Normally, the fair is always done by the last week of July, and this year, their fair is going to be the start of August, and we'll get done on Saturday, August 9th. So we're going to have the fair going on, and also, we're going to have a wedding dance going on at the pavilion, so we're going to have to block out some streets there, we just want everyone to understand that. But the committee went ahead and gave a special event application for the fire department to go ahead and have the street dance on August 9th, an ISO move.
Second.
Motion has been made seconded to approve a special event application for the Detroit Lakes Fire Department for a street dance on August 9th, 2024. Lakes Fire Department for a street dance on August 9th, 2024. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Okay, the next item is to have John Pratt just give us a quick summary of our monthly project status.
Ron, he's busy with those folks.
Oh, he's out there, okay.
So we'll come back to that.
Okay, so let's, I just want to mention a couple items here too. Item F, we've already approved it, but the Detroit Lakes Rotary Club is going to have their pole fishing derby, and that's up, depending, we have a lot of ISO, we need to do this, and that's on February 10th, and they're going to go through with that. Also on item G, we just want to make sure that people know that we're going to go through with the Polar Fest, and we're going to have fireworks, we're going to have the Polar Plunge, all the things we've always had with the Polar Plunge and the Polar Fest. And it's all depend upon whether we get snow and cold like we planned on, but I just want to be people aware that those events are still going on. And then also want to mention for next summer, we always have the street fair in downtown Detroit Lakes, and that's going to be going on again, and it's going to be held for two dates, May 31st and the 6th. So if you're a street fair person, mark those dates down. And that's all I have for this night.
And we'll go back to 6C when John returns. So we'll go to the finance committee, Chairman Joseph.
Item 7A was just kind of discussion of a potential draft that will be coming back next month on ways to lease out the existing, or the old police department building or the city administration building is working on right now, and so forward to come on that next month.
Will there be some information mailed out to the other council members that are around the committee? Is that the idea?
Yeah, we would have a final proposal next month's time.
Okay.
Or whatever Kelsey wants to do.
Yeah, I think there's some copies of the draft, but the finance committee did make several suggestions, changes, I think I'll do.
Okay, sounds good.
So then item 7C is consideration to accepting the DMRA annual financial statements and independent accountants audit report for a year ending April 30th, 2023. Stu Amber and Tom Teal from DMRA were here at the finance committee meeting. They introduced themselves, they introduced their audit, they did a presentation. The audit is in the packet. Finance committee, you review it, recommends approval, and ISO move.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the Detroit Mount Reclamation Area Annual Financial Statements and Independent Accountants Audit Report for the year ending April 30th, 2023. Discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Item D is consideration to approving the second reading and adoption of ordinance 518 amending city code chapter 600, section 601 licensing procedures. This is a second reading.
What changes?
No changes from last month. Today on, it basically gives a little bit more enforcement, administrative enforcement options for licensing. Nothing changed. Finance committee recommends approval and ISO move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the second reading and adopt ordinance 518 amending city code chapter 600, section 601 licensing procedures. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
That's it for finance.
All right, we'll move to the public safety committee.
Okay. The first item is a discussion regarding the carbon dioxide fire call billing. And for years, we've done this, although we haven't had any calls, I think we've had nine calls since 2017. But what we do, and if somebody called because they had a carbon dioxide concern, we would end up billing those people $800, the same amount they went for a fire call. And our new fire chief, Mike Hansen, he just thought that was just a little bit too high because if you had concern, you'd think, gosh, is it worth $800 to have somebody come out here? So what we decided to do, and we're going to recommend that we go through with this tonight, that we go ahead and have a charge of $140 for that call plus a $10 fee. So if somebody now calls for a carbon dioxide check, it'll cost a total of $150, and the committee recommends an ISO move for that fee schedule change.
There's, motion's been made and seconded to change our carbon dioxide fee for a fire call to $150 total. Discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Do we have a second?
Jackie, second.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, item B, we had consideration, consideration of resolution to accepting a $2,000 donation from John and Margaret Gunderson for both the fire department and for the police department. They're very generous in their giving, and it's up to the police department and fire department where they want to use this equipment app. But I want to make a resolution to accept having to thank the Gundersons for their generosity.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded to accept a $2,000 donation for Mr. and Mrs. John and Margaret Gunderson for the both of fire department and police department.
$2,000 donation? Yes.
Nice.
Mayor, there's a new resolution on the desk. Alvin Zeman's correct, there's a $2,000 contribution.
Perfect. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. And then, of course, we must send some kind of thank you out.
We will.
Okay, and then I just want to take a little bit because we just finished up a big year for both the fire department and for the police department. As all of you know, this year, for the first time, our Detroit Lakes Fire Department, we have a full-time fire chief in Mike Hansen moved down here from Alaska, and he's had a very busy schedule this first year. Our fire department this year handled 253 fire calls. We had 2,163 training hours. We currently have 28 volunteers for our fire department. We're short, we're down two volunteers. So if you're interested in being with a good group of people, come and see Mike or go to the city office, because we do need two volunteers to be at our peak of 30. And I'm going to have Mike come up because we've gone ahead and we, at the end of the year, we made staffing changes for officers and so forth. I'm going to have Mike come up and tell us who, who are the new positions.
Hey, Chief. Thank you, Alvin Zeman. Mayor and Council, yeah. So a little bit of a change, as you guys saw and voted on last month, with the transition from the constitution and bylaws form of governance that we were under and now moving towards that SOP. We're also switching from an election process to a selection hiring process for our officers in the department. So this list hopefully is going to change very much going forward until we get guys retiring and things like that. So I just want to mention, before I mention the names, these guys are the backbones of the fire department. These guys put in a lot of extra hours training new people, putting in a lot of work, putting in a lot of different hours, making sure the department is running smoothly. So our two assistant chiefs, Ryan Swanson will continue to be an assistant chief, Jason Harry as well will continue. And then we have one new captain this year, but Dave Shipman will continue for Metalak, Mike French, Jason Talbert, and then Andy Castner, who was captain in the past, is now captain again. Our training officer is Adam Schneithorfs, secretary is John Jacobson, and then our three trustees are Ryan Shute, Nate Marks, and Matt Ask.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief.
And thank all those newly elected people, thank you for the hard work.
You're welcome.
Okay, then I also want to mention about our police department, Chief Todd and his officers have been also likewise very busy this year. This year for 2023, we ended up with over 13,000 calls they had. This is comparison to 11,843 calls we had in 2022, and we had 12,681 calls in 2021. Now currently, the Detroit Lakes Police Department, we're at 17 sworn officers. We're actually two officers short, and we're trying to come across, we're doing interviews and trying to find people, but as all of you know, our Detroit Lakes Fire Department, like every other city department in the area, tri-state area, and also higher patrol and the counties with the sheriff's departments, we all need to hire officers, but there's a huge shortage of supply for these officers and there's a huge demand. So we're continuing to look for new officers, but it's like all jobs even here in the community, we're looking for a few good men and women with competitive pay and also competitive benefits. That's where we're at right now, but I just want to give recognition to both the fire department and the police department, the work they do, and public safety is very important to the city of Detroit Lakes, and we're very fortunate and thankful for the job that these men and women do for us each and every day, 365 days. And I want both the chiefs to go back to their departments and tell all those men and women, thank you for a great job, well done, city of Detroit Lakes. Really appreciates it, and especially when I heard the news about public safety in Los Angeles here this last month, it just put shivers up your back because these people are going into stores and robbing them, and if you're teenagers, you get off. So it's just unbelievable, laws are around the country. We have a good fire department, a good police department, and we're very thankful for it. Thank you. And that's all I have.
I could probably scratch off about a full page of my address.
I didn't mean to do that.
No, I appreciate your comments, Ron, thank you. Anything else?
That's all.
Okay. John, we'll go, let's go back to 6C if we could.
John, if you could just give us a little update where we're at currently, what we can expect for spring and summer in Detroit Lakes.
Before we do that, John, was there anything we need to talk about regarding those folks?
No, just, no, just some questions. As far as the status report, I have computers giving me bits here tonight, but, oh, I guess I can do that. I'll squint a little bit, but really not a lot of update on a number of the projects. Campbell, Linden Lane, Summit Avenue, both of those projects have wear course paving and some turf restoration to happen again in the spring, but largely those projects are complete. Terry Street and Dandrew is just slightly behind that, meaning we've got curb and gutter down and aggregate base, but we have the street pavement to place again in the spring and do turf restoration, but still basically 90% complete. The street rehab project, you've heard all about that tonight, I don't think I need to cover that any further. So that will impact a number of areas across the city. It's a pretty broadly spread project. Willow Springs, again, you've heard all about that this evening. Southwood Shore Estates, I don't have any update on that as far as what the developer's planning or not planning to do there. I don't know if Telsey's heard any update, but I haven't. So we're just kind of in a wait-see pattern, I guess, on that. The West Downtown project, we had our hearing on that last month. That'll be probably more significant in the way of disruption project next summer down on Frazi Street, Home Street, Front Street on the west side of the downtown area. I'm expecting, we may bring that project to the council for approval and authorization to bid in February. That might be a little bit tight, maybe March, we'll see how things play out, but either way, bidding that this spring for a summer construction. And we continue to work on the design for the new water tower. We're getting closer on that. I'd say we're probably around 70% complete or designed on that with the hopes of bringing that out to bid probably in March or so, this spring. And that'll be a two-year project, just to temper expectations. I would not expect that we'll see any sort of vertical construction on that this year, but maybe some foundation and site work and some utilities that go with that in the summer of 2025, you can see the tower a lot. Questions?
So we took that off the consent round, so we probably should have a little.
And I want to say too, for John Pratt this year, you know, he did the same type of bids everybody else is trying to find companies to bid for these projects. Last fall, we only had one company wanting to bid, and so price came in very high. So, you know, he's got a big job trying to find enough firms going to bid this stuff so we get a decent price that the homeowners can live with and taxpayers. So he's gone out of his way many times, saying, no, this isn't right, we're going to get it right. And we appreciate that. So I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to accept his monthly engineering report.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to accept the city engineers' monthly project status report. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. We are down to liquor and gambling control. Chairman Domon, is there anything you want to mention there?
We're going to get to your State of the Union here real quick. I want to do a shout out to Mitch and Randy and the rest of the team over at Detroit Lakes Liquor Store for having a fabulous year, and that's it, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. There is one item, I believe, Mike, on the public utilities commission?
Yes, Mayor, this morning, the public utilities commission met and reviewed the consideration for approving the purchase of 1160 Campbell Avenue. The property is listed for sale. It's 2.35 acres of parcels of land that runs from 1160 Campbell Avenue over to the northeast corner of the wastewater treatment plant, originally listed for $95,000. We have agreed on a purchase price of $76,000 plus we estimate a couple thousand dollars in survey costs that will be borne by the public utilities. Payment for it will come from the wastewater fund, and the purpose of acquisition is for future expansion potential for the wastewater treatment plant. So I have item 10A, consideration to approving the purchase of 1160 Campbell Avenue, and ISO move.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the purchase of 1160 Campbell Avenue for use by the public utilities, Detroit Lakes Public Utilities. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Before I get into my annual state of the city address, there's a few other items to take care of. I do have one ask out for the planning commission, and I'm waiting to hear on that. I would like to recommend the name of Chris Miller to be appointed to the Detroit Country Club Board to replace Sam Rufford, and I would entertain a motion.
So for both of those?
Second.
Motion's, it's just for Chris Miller.
Okay, Chris Miller, okay.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Also, Nancy Hager is choosing not to be reappointed to the Arts and Culture Commission, and so Anna Carlson, who happens to be Sean's wife, she was by Anna, right?
Yes.
She's agreed to go on, and I think she'll be a good addition, and I'd like to recommend Anna Carlson for the Arts and Culture Commission.
Aye.
So.
Second.
Smart both.
I've learned a couple of things.
Did we have, did we have a, Mike, second? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. We're going to do a DLC CC and Food Pantry Tours on Wednesday, January 17th at 2:00 PM starting at the Food Pantry. And do you need people to let you know if they're coming or not, or have you already done it?
Preferably just let me know, but otherwise you just show up at the Food Pantry to chew, and then our goal is to be at DLC CC about 3:00.
Okay. The Elected Leaders Institute with the League of Minnesota Cities is coming up, and you can let Kerry know if you're interested in attending that. The Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Legislative Action Day at the State Capitol is March 20th, 2024, and if you're interested in attending, please let Kerry know. The joint governance dates are before you, the panels of the city council meeting dates are before you. And also, Kelsey, did you want to mention the possible planning session, work session?
Yeah, we're tentatively looking at either March 14th or 15th for our strategic planning session. At this point, we're probably planning just a one-day retreat, so if you have any preference on either one of those days, just let me know. Still waiting for a proposal from the consultants, so nothing's set in stone yet, but we're tentatively looking at those dates.
Okay. Is there anything else from city staff that needs to be brought up?
Mayor, I do have one thing. Under 11, you approve the licenses, but the actual plumbing licenses are out of our old software system, so if we handed out plumbing licenses, if I could get a motion on approval of those plumbing licenses.
I hope to approve the plumbing licenses as handed out.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the list of plumbing licenses that were distributed to the council to see if we can, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. And so, Kelsey, is there anything else?
That's all I have.
Mayor, anything you want?
Happy law enforcement day, right?
Is it?
Yep.
Cool.
Thank you, Chief Todd, and thank you for your crew. So that's up to you not to take your name from the fire department, but it's law enforcement. Thank you.
Dan, Ron, Jackie, Mike.
Nothing more.
And Sean.
Yes, sir.
And with that. And with that, I'm going to deliver some State of the City remarks. I hope my voice can last. I'm thinking in a couple of years, I'm going to be down to a whisper. To the city council, city staff, and the citizens of Detroit Lakes, it is an honor to deliver this evening the annual State of the City address for the year twenty twenty-three. Overall, twenty twenty-three was a good year in the city of Detroit Lakes, continuing to be an excellent place to live, to work, and to visit. Detroit Lakes remains fiscally sound despite reductions in local government aid over the past twenty-plus years, amounting to millions of dollars in revenue that the city has had to make up locally. Despite these challenges, we continue to enjoy one of the lowest tax rates in the region, including cities like Fergus Falls, Bemidji, Thief River Falls, and others. And our city tax rate is significantly lower than the average city rate for our greater Minnesota cities with populations between five and ten thousand. Detroit Lakes is fortunate to have two revenue funds to reduce property taxes. Transfer to the general fund for the electric utility will be six hundred and forty-one thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars for twenty twenty-four. Our municipal liquor store had record sales surpassing nine-point-two million dollars in twenty twenty-three, making our operation the seventh highest grossing municipal liquor store in Minnesota. The city will make an annual transfer from the liquor fund to the general fund of five hundred and forty thousand dollars. So to put the value of these two revenue funds into perspective, without the combined total direct transfer of the general fund of these dollars, our tax levying Detroit Lakes would have to immediately increase approximately eighteen percent across the board to maintain the status quo. Our finance department also projects that final receipts from the city's food and beverage tax in twenty twenty-three will be approximately five hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which would be the highest ever collected since its inception. While not a direct fund transfer, the tax provides an ongoing resource for stewardship to our area lakes, for parking and trail improvements, and continued redevelopment of our business corridor sector. Detroit Lakes financed several projects in twenty twenty-three, most significantly the new public works facility through the issuance of bonds. To issue that debt, the city had to undergo a bond rating by standard impours. As a result of that rating, the city received a double-A stable rating due to our very strong finances, strong financial management, and our growing tax base. This is an excellent bond rating for a city our size, and it saves the citizens of Detroit Lakes significant dollars in lower interest costs. Upon recommendation of the city council finance committee, the city finance staff presented the final budget and levy to the city council in December, proposing an eleven-point-two-two percent increase in the city's property tax levy. Several factors influenced the twenty twenty-four budget, including an increase for street rehab projects, street maintenance, a new full-time police officer, increase of cost in capital equipment, and an increased levy for the new public works facility debt. Despite the levy increase, the city's property tax values grew by fourteen-point-nine-six percent, which increased the overall tax capacity and lessened the impact to property owners. For example, without a valuation increase, a home valued at three hundred thousand in Detroit Lakes would actually see a decrease of about thirty-eight dollars in twenty twenty-four on the city portion of their tax bill. The one-half percent local option sales tax that was approved by referendum to fund the new police department building began in October of twenty nineteen. While the sales tax authorization allowed for a nine-year duration, the sales tax paid off the debt in June of this past year in just under four years of collections. Detroit Lakes saw numerous capital projects in twenty twenty-three. The Detroit Lakes Becker County Airport projects included the reconstruction of the arrival-departure building, parking lot, which coincided with the fuel system replacement project. The new system includes new tanks for aviation gasoline and jet fuel, along with credit card processing. A third airport project of twenty twenty-three was the demolition of the nineteen forty T-hanger, extension of existing taxi lanes, and site prep for two new six-unit T-hangers to be constructed later in twenty twenty-four. While not technically a city project, the Becker County Museum took occupancy of their new building in twenty twenty-three. The city of Detroit Lakes contributed in several ways to assist with the project, including a cash donation of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, paving of the parking lot, and a fifty thousand dollar donation and parking lot lighting from the Detroit Lakes Public Utilities. The remodeling of City Hall began in late twenty twenty-two, with progress throughout this past year. The project is being financed with existing fund balances and will have no impact on property taxes in the city. The project has an anticipated completion date of May of this year, hopefully, and transition into the facility from the temporary offices will be a sizable endeavor for city staff. A new city public works facility planned since at least two thousand and thirteen is finally becoming a reality. The bid opening for the new facility occurred last January, with the project receiving twelve bids. Because of the favorable accepted bid, a bid alternate was also approved, increasing the building size to fifty-eight thousand square feet. Completion date is expected to be June of this year, and again, transition into the new facility will also be a large undertaking. The Heartland Trail Extension between Detroit Lakes and Frazee received an additional five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in state bond funding in twenty twenty-three to complete construction. Although Becker County has completed the design, wetland acquisition has delayed construction. If all goes as planned, bidding will occur early this spring with construction during the summer construction season. The Washington Park renovation project did not receive state bond funding in twenty twenty-three. A revised bonding bill request in the amount of one million six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or half of the total project budget, was submitted to Minnesota Management and Budget earlier in the year with our local legislators to introduce new bonding legislation this session. The Senate Capital Investment Committee did make a tour stop in August to visit the ball field, and the project seemed to have a warm reception among the committee. Also, the local Washington Park Committee has been working on final design preparation and documents which need to be submitted to the Minnesota State Historical Preservation Office for their review. The Boys and Girls Club of Detroit Lakes was able to complete their playground project at Crowe Share Park this past year. The city of Detroit Lakes contributed fifty thousand from the park dedication fund, fifty thousand in ARPA funds, and seventy-five thousand from the liquor fund to assist in the project. The Becker County Food Pantry opened its new building in late October. The organization had purchased a parcel of land from the Detroit Lakes Development Authority in twenty twenty-two to relocate and build a new facility. The city of Detroit Lakes contributed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in ARPA funds to assist the construction of the facility and completed a utility extension project on Terry Street this past year to serve the new building. The city council contracted with RDG Planning and Design in twenty twenty-two to conduct the public planning process for Westlake Drive Phase Three and the Pavilion City Park Project. A public hearing was held in the summer of twenty twenty-two, with RDG presenting a preliminary design to the city council at a December twenty-two work session. This momentum carried over into twenty twenty-three, and a special meeting was held in January to authorize a resolution requesting local sales tax authority for the Pavilion City Park Project. Sales tax legislation was introduced, and after receiving a hearing in the Senate Tax Committee, the Detroit Lakes sales tax request was approved by the legislature. Unfortunately, the city's sales tax request was approved before the legislature imposed a two-year moratorium on all new sales tax requests. RDG held another public open house in March on the proposed preliminary design. The design included a new two-story pavilion with a total of twenty-one thousand square feet, and a redesigned city park, complete with a new playground, new bathhouse, additional parking, green space, and splash pads. The proposal was met with mixed opinions, and ultimately, the city council requested additional design options from RDG. Due to a lack of consensus, no sales tax referendum was held in twenty twenty-three. A major project for this year is to reach consensus on a tentative layout for the pavilion and city park and pursue a referendum in November of twenty twenty-four. On a parallel track, city staff have been working on an archaeological survey of the city park area to submit to the State Historic Preservation Office for their review, which could be a significant hurdle in any reconstruction in the city park. The city was notified in twenty twenty-two of a one-point-three-six million dollar state legacy grant for the Detroit Mountain Recreation Area. However, the funds were not received until this past fall. The one-point-six million dollar project includes the addition of a lighted Nordic ski loo, the snowmaking equipment, additional mountain biking trails, treehouse construction, and a natural playground, and paving of the trailhead. The city is contributing two hundred thousand dollars towards the paving project utilizing food and beverage tax funds. Construction of the improvements is expected this year. A trailhead project for the Heartland Trail has been proposed to be located on a city-owned parcel of property bordering East Shore Drive and US Highway ten. City staff submitted a grant application to MidDOT for a carbon reduction grant to make improvements to the parking area, install electric vehicle charging stations, and construct a park shed. MidDOT notified the city that it has been awarded a three-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand-dollar grant for the project, with construction not likely until late this year or in twenty twenty-five. The Minnesota Flyers Gymnastics Organization is planning a significant expansion to the city-owned gymnastics facility. The proposed expansion is projected to cost roughly four-point-two million dollars and will require no city funding. Funding is ongoing with construction possibles here, and we may hear from them in February or so. Several infrastructure projects occurred in twenty twenty-three. The most notable was the completion of Westlake Drive Phase One and Phase Two from Legion Road to the Pelican River. These projects greatly improved stormwater management and stewardship to Detroit Lake and improved safety for walkers and bikers. The streetscapes and bike path have been well-received by the community. The completion of these two phases sets the stage for Phase Three, which is Legion Road to Washington Avenue in twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. While Highland Drive was technically a county project, the city participated in the cost and was instrumental in writing a one-point-two-five million dollar local road improvement program grant. The project was completed this past year. Long Pines Estates Phase Three was completed in twenty twenty-three, with the final asphalt wear course occurring in June. This new subdivision will include twenty-seven additional lots. There were two significant reconstruction projects that occurred in twenty twenty-three, Campbell Avenue and Linden Lane, and the Summit Avenue Project. Both projects completed underground utility replacement and the first lifts of asphalt in twenty twenty-three, with project completion slated for this spring. A smaller project was the utility extension on Terry Street and Dandrew subdivision. The utility extension on Terry Street serves both the new food pantry building and the new housing development, Dandrew subdivision, which contains nine new housing lots. The twenty twenty-three, well, we heard about that tonight in Willow Springs, so skip over that. Building construction in Detroit Lakes was steady in two thousand and twenty-three with some supply chain relief, but continues to be impacted by labor and product costs and higher interest rates. Three hundred and sixty-six permits were issued in twenty twenty-three, totaling thirty-four and a half million dollars this past year, with new residential construction increasing slightly over twenty twenty-two, with twenty-nine new homes built. Of note, a hundred and fifty-five new homes have been constructed in Detroit Lakes in the past five years. Some miscellaneous city activities: the city's park board has been working with the VFW and the local chapter of the Disabled American Veterans on the placement of an American Disabilities Act accessible dock structure on Detroit Lake. The city's Arts and Culture Commission was busy in twenty twenty-three, creating a new electrical box art installation with the assistance of Public Utilities. The commission also worked in partnership with Project Four Twelve on several mural installations around the community, along with some smaller art surprises installed around the city. And we'll take a short sip of water. The city council held a work session in April to discuss the outcomes of the RDG Pavilion Open House event that was held in March. Also, a work session was held in June to review the updated capital improvement plan and revisions to the special assessment policy, which were adopted in September. Twenty twenty-four will see some new key personnel changes, as liquor store manager Randy Burr will be moving into phased retirement, with Mitch Anderson being promoted to manager. Bridget Penton will have a dual role in her current energy services specialist position and a new economic development director. City Clerk Glory French has announced that she will retire in July. Various projects slated for this year include completion of Campbell Avenue, Linden Lane, and Summit Avenue, reconstruction, and also the start of the twenty twenty-four West Downtown Project, which includes segments of Frazee Street, Holm Street, Front Street, and Lake Avenue. Westlake Drive Phase Three, which is the beachfront, will likely be a twenty twenty-six construction project. However, a lot of design and planning will need to take place this year and into twenty twenty-five in preparation for the project. Streetscapes, street design, trail construction, tree planting, signage, parking, lighting, bathhouse reconstruction, and more will be under consideration by the city council. The Washington Ballpark renovations could occur later this year if bond funding is approved by the legislature. The Pavilion City Park Project is probably the biggest project for twenty twenty-four, and a great deal of public interaction will be needed to have a successful referendum in twenty twenty-four. Twenty twenty-three was another very busy year for the Detroit Lakes Public Utilities. The Electric Department purchased its first electric vehicle in February to learn firsthand how these vehicles perform in our climate. With the increased interest in electric vehicles recently, the utility has been receiving customer questions on performance, charging costs, and maintenance for electric vehicles. In August, the Detroit Lakes Public Utilities, with other area utilities, hosted an EV ride and drive. The utility also installed the first large direct-current fast charger in northwest Minnesota at Weber Motors and worked with other dealers to better understand charge rates, impacts to their operational costs, and overall education on EV chargers. With the new Westlake Drive Phase One and Phase Two projects, the Electric Utility replaced the overhead transmission with a new underground service. They also installed new energy-saving LED lights along both sections for roadway and trail lighting, and these efforts were key elements with beautification of the area and the trail. With assistance from the Minnesota Clean Energy Resource Team, the Electric Utility installed an addition to our community solar project to provide energy assistance to customers who qualify. We are accruing energy this season to award energy assistance for next year's heating season and are working with Mohvi to identify potential candidates for solar energy for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five heating season. We are the first municipality, first municipal utility in Minnesota to create such a program, and the Clean Energy Resource Team hopes to replicate this program in other communities of the state. As mentioned, the utility installed new lighting at the Becker County Museum parking lot, as well as new LED lights along Summit Avenue. One hundred and fifteen high-pressure sodium lights were replaced with energy-saving LED lighting. On the water side, the water reclamation facility continues to exceed expectations and has met all permit requirements since going online in twenty nineteen. The water meter changeout is getting close to completion, with about two hundred meters left to change, with expected completion early this spring. The department conducted another very successful water festival with fifteen presenters and attended by about four hundred students, learning about our wells, water, and wastewater systems. The city drinking water supply was tested in twenty twenty-three by the Minnesota Department of Health for eleven different contaminants with none detected, confirming the safety of our drinking water. Overall, the Ford Deep Wells and the iron and manganese removal water treatment plant are functioning very well, meeting all the Department of Health standards for testing and reporting. Twenty twenty-four will be a busy year with the start of a new... Twenty twenty-four will be a busy year with the start of a new planning for the new one point five million gallon water tower, replacing the main water tower in Detroit Lakes. The Detroit Lakes Police Department had a busy year, as Rod mentioned, responding to twelve thousand nine hundred and ninety-five calls for service, which is over a thousand more calls in 2022. The department made several equipment updates. Twenty twenty-three was the first full year of operation for the new body camera program, with the system working well and functioning with minimal issues. Prosecutors appreciate the accessibility and proof of activities it provides, and officers and supervisors appreciate the incident documentation and protection from false complaints. The department also made several new equipment purchases with upgrades this past year, including a night vision monocular for night officer use, and the squad car radar units were modernized, replacing the outdated units. Forty-millimeter launchers and munitions were also purchased and put into service. The launchers have multiple uses, most notably the ability to use less than lethal force from a considerable distance. Tasers have a range of about twenty-five feet, while the forty-millimeter launcher allows for four times that distance, creating time and space which can be life-saving for both the suspect and the officer. Block forty-seven handguns were purchased for the department in 2023, replacing handguns that had been in service since 2011. And most of this equipment was purchased using donated or DWI forfeiture funds. This past year has been a difficult year for the department's school resource officer due to much uncertainty related to school resource officer law changes that were enacted by the Minnesota Legislature. The department hosted a week-long National Association of School Resource Officers Training Event held in the community room in March with school resource officers from across the region in attendance. Several community events were conducted in 2023, including the Pink Patch Project, which raised money for Essentia Health here in Detroit Lakes, the Battle of the Badges, which gathers essentials for students in the Detroit Lakes School District, and the department's annual Shop with a Cop event. Our department was audited by the Minnesota Board of Peace Officers Standards and Training late this past year. This audit examines required policies, required training for all officers, and our hiring practices to ensure all state requirements are met, and the department met all of the requirements in that area. As Rod mentioned earlier, the most pressing issue in law enforcement today is police officer staffing shortages, and as anticipated, this is now affecting Detroit Lakes. And I also urge all the city council members to review Chief Todd's 2023 year-end report as it pertains to these issues. Twenty twenty-three was an exciting year for the Detroit Lakes Fire Department. Along with the addition of the full-time fire chief, the department was busy responding to two hundred and fifty-three calls and completing twenty-one hundred and sixty-three hours of training. Recruiting efforts have added three new members this year with no separations or retirements, bringing the total roster to twenty-eight. There are three new recruits in the Certification and Training Academy with the completion date of March sixteenth this year, and the department continues recruiting efforts around the community and with social media. In December, the department recommended and the city council approved three new fire service contracts with Detroit Erie and Lakeview Township. Annexation, expansion of our park system and facilities, and increased infrastructure continues to put demands on our public works department and the current volume of streets, parking lots, sanitary sewer, lift stations, stormwater ponds, parklands, and many other city-owned facilities is significant. I urge the city council and citizens to read the Public Works Department annual report to get a true appreciation of the number of facilities and infrastructure that's cared for by our city public works employees. Some public works updates include cameras have been installed in the city park and People's Park, almost fully installed at South Shore Park, and Long Lake Park is scheduled to have cameras installed in 2024. Site work was completed this past fall in People's Park for three additional pickleball courts. This project is being funded by the Pickleball Association. The department participated in the annual Day of Caring and also Arbor Day this past spring. The department has received funds to place climbing boulders in various locations, the first of which is the rec center. The Detroit Lakes Park Board has adopted a strategic plan for 2023 through 2025, which includes planning for remaining city parks, enhancing marketing, improvements to Washington Park, the Pavilion City Park project, connection of existing multi-lane trails and mountain bike trails, and implementational fundraising strategies and additional artwork throughout the community. The department again is looking forward to moving into the new public works facility on North Tower Road, hopefully in June of this year. The Detroit Lakes Development Authority assisted several economic projects this past year, including the Detroit Mountain Recreation Area Legacy Grant for one point seven million dollars for improvements at Detroit Mountain. The authority acquired property adjacent to the North Industrial Park and authorized an engineering report for the development of the parcel and sold land to In-Land Motion for a new twenty thousand square foot manufacturing facility that will create twelve new jobs. The authority also reviewed information about the need for childcare and workforce development and recommended approval of ten thousand dollars in ARPA funds to be paid to the Becker County Area Child Care and Development Fund. The authority also dealt with five different tax increment financing districts this past year. The Detroit Lakes Development Authority continues to administer the following loan programs: a one point five million dollar economic development grant and loan fund established by the Public Utilities Commission, a nine hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar Development Authority Loan Fund used to make loans to new or expanding businesses, the two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar revolving loan fund for new and expanding businesses, and also administers the five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar Detroit Lakes Loan Fund through West Central Initiative to make loans to new and expanding businesses. Planning Commission and staff had had their active and busy year in 2023, considering three rezoning requests, three conditional use permits, six variances, two non-conforming use permits, five subdivisions, one annexation, seven zoning amendments, and thirteen short-term rental applications. So in conclusion, 2023 was certainly a busy year in the city of Detroit Lakes with many accomplishments. As we move into the new year, I believe 2024 will be just as exciting and productive as we continue to grow and prosper. On behalf of the city council, I want to thank the volunteers serving on our various advisory boards and commissions, assisting the council in making important decisions for the city's future. To the citizens and businesses of Detroit Lakes, on behalf of the city council, thank you for all that you do to make Detroit Lakes a great community that it is. To the city administrator, department heads, and to all city employees, thank you for all your good work this past year. You are the professionals that keep our city functioning efficiently and who not only serve our citizens, but equally important, make our city appealing to our visitors. To the 2023 city council and vice mayor Seaman, thank you from all the citizens of Detroit Lakes for your service, leadership, and accomplishments this past year. It is an honor to serve as your mayor, and I look forward to working with all of you in 2024. And with that, thank you. The business of this council has come to a conclusion. The meeting's adjourned.